All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Planning Board Meeting. We're upstairs in the Wyman Room. The council chamber is beautiful. It goes council to council. Let me just call me for water. I have a nice period of water.
Sure. Chairman Zucker?
Here.
Vice Chairman, Gelson Alvarez is excused this evening. Mr. Spurk?
Here.
Mr. John is excused. Councilmember Hannah is excused. Mr. Delory?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Porcelli is excused. Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Ballis excused. Ms. Bowden?
Here.
You have a court. You may proceed.
All right.
So just as, so I know that my vote counts now?
Yes.
Yeah. So I won't?
Yeah, exactly. We do need you. All right, time with adequate notice paper. According to New Jersey statute, ten and four dash ten adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper or record at the post here in Sweet Hall. Please be advised this is a note smoking building fire exits are not to my right. They're actually out of this building and down to the right and to the left and back of this room. This is the scheduled meeting of the planning board. There may be other meetings currently running simultaneously with this meeting. If you're not here for some planning board, you're meeting maybe upstairs or elsewhere, actually downstairs or elsewhere in this building. At this time, we just want to let the flag. Does it work on the wall? Digital flag, commandant flag? Oh, yes. I pledge this is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sure. Next on the agenda is if we have any contribution or any updates on the DRO changes.
Share a quick update.
Thank you, Mr. Spurk.
So Jennifer Ball, I've had opportunity to connect a number of times via Zoom to update the process, but we hope that we've done an able endeavor to collect input around potential proof of DRO. So that has at least today started soliciting input from a variety of stakeholders, most importantly, our professionals, Tom and others in Christmas Place, hoping to identify some opportunity for approval there, as well as the advisor report to each of the C and R commission and others. So we're working towards delivering, sharing, maybe initially a summary of our findings to date. And then what we would imagine doing is taking as a part of your direction, since that's prioritization, and if that needs to actually probably happen after over a year or so, if we got the time. So kind of collecting all the inputs at the moment, we'll set some prioritization, and then we can decide yes, no, whether we want to take some action around work.
Good. Very much. Do you have sense of finding, like your, this initial due diligence by?
Yeah, I think we'll get that based on at least my portion. We've kind of divided amongst ourselves. I'd ask for a, for example, for the West, the government's permission by the July twenty second meeting, so next month, a sense of what their priorities are, who looks to pull together. And to the degree that we want to subdue any stake after regulation we can, but I would imagine certainly as we've discussed along ourselves is to work itself, those resource advisement. So I think the goal is to exit summer, what we say, converse that with a sense of whatever action we want to take, because we don't actually pay time to propose actual change to the DRO, and not to judge whether or not it's on our agenda, just we'll have time to resource it, and then post up the government budget, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we need to build that muscle. We have routine, we have time, we'll build time on that. So we'll keep moving.
Good. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any questions?
I would say the problem is we have ordinance changes not related to the DRO, so there may be opportunities for, 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 for whatever it is.
Yeah. We're there. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
I had just heard information from the last agenda, so if there's nothing to talk about.
I guess quickly, just very quickly. So cross-acceptance is a process by which the state coordinates the county and local municipalities to make sure everyone's plan is in coordination. I think the state's supposed to do it every three years, but twenty-one years later, here we are. And we are now going to wait for them to release the plan. We've been in touch with the county, and there is a template. Tom Barans has taken to stand the first layer of the template, but that will eventually go to some network subcommittee for actual discussion, but ultimately it will come to the planning board. And that'll be a process by which residents and people will be able to comment on that, after which you'll report back to the county process, and then back to the state also. Tom, do you want to add anything?
No, well said. I think we're in a position where we're just waiting for the state to issue a plan. Initially, it's supposed to publicize it by April eight, and here we are, June twenty-fourth.
And I'm glad we've been a March date, if I recall correctly. Initially, initially.
Right. So we don't know when we drop, and then there's presumably the schedule for coordination and publicating what will be, what will, what will most of the, the, the. But anyway, there's only so much we can do preliminarily as a way to find. So I think we're in good shape. Ready to grab a morning, when we get the plan?
And perhaps, perhaps by the next meeting, we might be able to share recent drafts in the planning board, consider a few measures yourself.
So there are a few questions, just to give an example, in terms of, you know, what are some of its top planning priorities? For example, the board is certain law court to address those types of questions. That will be put to us. As soon as, I mean, as soon as they have a plan, in our response meeting?
Well, there's a response template with, you know, eleven or twelve questions, I'd say, which has already been made publicly. And so those questions, we've sort of left alone, waiting for the boards. And so that's what we're going to turn over, even ask for, you know, the whole plan.
So by the next meeting, at least a draft, any of the few other ones to talk about. And instead, of course, we'll either publicly reserve an action.
See, that's good.
Yeah. So we're at a meeting, which is where? And to a meeting, and even with a chair.
I think we can see that.
Yes.
All right. Very nice. Thank you. My client, we are, we have, we're not, we don't have a resolution.
We're going to carry, yet the resolution on the two-part view terrace is still in production, so not to get ready for distribution will be very long advance next month's meeting. So certainly we'll be able to adopt it next week.
Which, just to remind everybody, the meeting is on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, as opposed to our usual Monday, December.
It's on the twenty-second.
Oh, it is on the twenty-second. Maybe it was my mistake.
No.
Good, so we're Monday, the twenty-second.
Can you dive wolves' little lair? Just like yours. Tricky question.
Multiple vacations.
Your tan is looking good.
Not, not for long. All right. I guess. I'll do that next.
All right, so we'll take up that resolution of the next meeting. Next up is minutes off on the previous meeting. For clues, does anyone have any thoughts or comments, get a chance to look over the minutes? Maybe the minutes are not really carrying out, as we break the past. Is that something we would like to see back in, or clear? You know, it's not, not for the minutes, it's used to carry more commentary from the boards, the board members.
Well, how?
I'm not sure if that adds color, if that's useful or not, but it's up to.
The legal requirement, of course, and this is more than sufficient for the legal requirement.
Yes.
And of course, we do have full, correct, if necessary. At least in, well, I should leave it to the legal opinion, which is a legal opinion is more than sufficient, but in that sense, I think it's covered pretty sufficiently as well, you know, comprehensive, but that's more policy to say.
No one has any objection to, in fact, if we slim down some of the way the minutes are recorded, it's fine, as long as they accept.
Because as long as there's some, this is towards the letter, the relation on all applications where we wouldn't necessarily have to robust or thoroughly, it's very resourceful.
Thanks, Senator. All right, then. Anyone have any thoughts of which changes to the, it's all taken a motion approved? Mr. Spurk, thank you, Senator. All right. All good? We do have votes?
Yes, correct. All those in favor? And any opposed? The motion carries.
As always, we'll rule the extension to approve.
Yes, they were, um, don't.
You don't need to announce. You don't need to announce. I mean, do it very surreptitious. But that's what happens. All right. So we have a, we have a hearing tonight on thirty Woodland Avenue. And I'll, at this time, I'll invite the applicant to step forward.
May I, Chairman, while we're approaching and getting ready, I did have an opportunity to do the notice about the content of the notice to be sufficient, about it to be timely certified mail on May thirty, published on June the sixth, both at least ten days prior to this evening. So my committee board has jurisdiction here, and decide the application should be submitted at season.
Thank you, Mr. Spurk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the board, when you can leave my name is George Flannery, the law firm Lady of Sodding and McCone, here tonight on behalf of the administration. Property is located at thirty Woodland Avenue, it's lot nine, block nineteen oh four, and is located in the old SC zone, near section of the forest of Woodland Avenue. It's currently a non-conforming structure, it's three stories, two stories are permitted, it's also currently not performing use. It was a voting house, or living house. The applicant is proposing to revert to the structure, not change its facade, not change the exterior, but to revert the structure and uses to create three apartments, one on the first floor, one on the second floor, one on the third floor, as well as approximately seven hundred, precisely seven hundred and twenty-two square feet of office space on the first floor that would be a conforming use. The location of the structure itself is still non-conforming because it has, as I said, the whole of these three stories. The connection with the application, there's an emergency, both areas associated with the property, are approximately ten in all. If we refer to the planners of the new letter, of the circulated connection with this application, all of them identify, one of those, where we testified tonight, Mike Rawl, who's our planner and our engineer, one of those wearing trash, we worked with the city, and we came up with a nice solution to eliminate that current, of course, most of it. So I don't want to talk too much because the professionals can really shit this. So Jim is, as I says, the, one of the owners of thirty Woodland Avenue, because he's got the property itself, and what he tends to do with it, Mike Rawl, a quality engineer, is our planner and our engineer as well, and to amend this, is our architect, who all well, architecture, he'll see the architectural thing as well. Great big questions around, please, jump in.
First, Rachel, your last name, please?
Sure, W E, N is in Nancy, N is in Nancy, E R.
Thank you.
Then, Chairman, with your permission, I consider all their witnesses, as well as our board professionals.
Thank you.
One of them, of our board professionals, and all witnesses, will raise your right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, and the whole truth, and nothing but the proof?
Listen here.
Thank you. We have affirmative from everyone. Jim?
Okay.
Sir, please state your full name, former, last name?
Last name, B A N G, yes, David, person, Shin, X I N.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks to you for being here and that, both in the hearing. We wanted to party together with my wife, and actually, the kids want to be here tonight, as I know. Listen to my present. So, as Rachel introduced, my name is Shin, now I'm the owner of thirty Woodland Avenue, we done that. So then, we purchased the property in August twenty twenty-three, almost a year ago, so been working with a great team in the last several months to develop a plan, who goes to turn this into a mixed-use house, as Rachel mentioned. Usually, as we're in the lumber, we don't have room here, the ourselves. So as you are aware, and Rachel introduced, it's a, it was used as a living house, a boarding house, not a, making fifteen debate rooms. Our vision and plan is to turn this into a mixed-use house, that will be according to the whole R C team code. There will be three apartments, different sizes, that can fit different tenants' needs, and that's the place, of course. The office will be for professional, commercial, purpose only, no retail, no medical, so we want to ensure there's a stable and low stability needs, and how to stop the parking and air issue. And also, for that kind of office, there will be no need for regular loading, unloading, inventory, or products, shift needs. Delivery will be sent to our residential properties. In terms of the trash collection and landscaping, I did call to the trash collections a recent township and explained the situation, gave the address, and what we're going to do. So they confirmed for three apartments and one office space, we can have one eighty-gallon trash bin per unit for a total of four, that we can put alongside the house, alongside the driveway, and the trash collection will just come each time and take the trash to the truck and return them. And so for recycle, I'm going to put on the curb, so the details will be explained in our plan. Landscaping, we currently have a professional landscaper for long hair and snow, and winter will be doing that, sort of this way, in this canvas, going out, sort of, of our, of our, of our, of our house. So in summary, we're really moving forward to upgrade and improve the property, so it can look really aesthetic appealing from the outside, and some of the use of the inside. So that's help enter better the neighborhood, improve to the forest, and so, and hopefully can help enhance the use value. With that, thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, if, Chairman, is there any questions for Sean, for Mr. Spurk, and if you have any questions, or, of course?
I would just ask, is the building currently occupied?
No, thank you.
And I guess we'll get the parking at some point, in terms of alternatives?
Yes, yeah. Office, the parking. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know this will move the public, just want to make sure that it's reflected on the record, that we saw the public, the question that I like is.
Thank you, Mr. Spurk. I don't have a room full of chairs to look at, right?
Please state your full name, former, last?
Phil Mendez, here, N E N, B U C, I for S P E I R.
Thank you.
All right. So before we get rolling, you just, please provide the board with your professional allegations.
Uh, yes, actually, I'm to, I've been to a pre-grad summits, moved here after moving from Oklahoma, where I have a bachelor of architecture degree, at the University of Oklahoma, I have licensed practice architecture, same as in Jersey, and my license is current what we say.
Have you been to planning boards, or certain boards of justice before, as an expert?
Yes, I've been before the Little Mermaid Board, I remember my own grant before, it's for a preparation, maybe, but I haven't, but I have not appeared before this board having a license.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions, or thoughts? Mr. Business, there's allegations, I mean, sorry, it's a, it's a.
If you wouldn't mind just going over the board verification, architectural renderings, those, uh?
Uh, sorry, after, if I have drawing present, or if you want to pass anything out? However, you would.
Well, we have drawings, I believe you were. Sorry.
Just show us, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm going to. You got anything? Thank you. You know, if you're suggesting, seeing how, for the camera, or like that, was it a bit easier for the sonographer, the reporter to text, or to discuss, or to discuss, like, here, and then you go there, and you go off?
I'll be gone.
Yeah. I'm going to reject.
So we're projecting, Mark.
Alright, reject. Thank you.
Alright, so I don't see the record, if you could give us the dates of the plans.
So actually, we're going to start with P V two, and that is dated, oh two, oh five, oh two, four. Um, P V two, really, the gist of this, of this project is, from the exterior, we do not have the intent to do very much at all. We want to keep, we don't really want to change the nature of the house. We will be replacing the roof in kind, we will be, all trim, railings, spindles, things like that, that will all be repainted, the existing siding will remain. P V two shoves, all the existing floors, the big issue about this project is that at one point, it seemed like it might have been one very grand house that had a nice grand central staircase. At some point, somebody had bifurcated it, and then obviously, it had been shoved down into fifteen different hallway rooms. So we're going to endeavor to put it back together in a much, in a much easier way, we're going to be able to replans in space. We are expanding the existing dormer, this was actually in the recommendation, I believe, during the technical review committee. There is an existing gable dormer, it will be front and rear. The, the nature of the third floor is, a large portion of it, it's, is under a very steep roof, and so we will be expanding this, the materials will match the existing house, in order so we can get a little bit more plate height in those areas, and then in addition, we're actually going to give some space back in some other areas, where it is under this deep roof, we're actually just going to be dropping the walls in, walls, you know, spaces that are, you know, less than two, three feet in height, don't have any use of. But, so as far as the exterior goes, that's really the nature of our project. We don't, like I said, we don't intend to do much, we don't really want to mess with the character of the whole itself. There are some improvements, or what we feel to be improvements, there's some, he's looking at it right now, we can talk about that, but there are some illuminated, what we believe to be self-illuminated streets, uh, business signs that are on the canopy, on the front, on the side, an additional side, additional one over on the, on the paddling side, we'll be looking for removing those, just kind of to restore it back to its original condition. For real reference, the P V one, initiative to propose the plans, and how we're handling it. The majority of the front section of the roof on the ground floor is what will be keeping for the, for the office use. We will be introducing a loose stair at the rear by the residential entry. This stair will go down into the basement, the existing basement is actually bifurcated halfway along the house here, so the basement front storage will be used for the office, and the basement rear storage will be secured storage for the tenants. The northwest portion will be a one-bedroom apartment, a, uh, entry to the two townhouses are actually going to be two side-by-side units, so each unit will actually have a second floor and a third floor component. The next inside will be split, right there at the entry, everybody has a private entry. For the proposed second floor, this is going to have one large bedroom with en suite, you don't have a laundry room, kitchen, living, dining, we envision this to be the major league space, maybe this is a professional, maybe this is, maybe it's people that are downsizing, getting out, or, you know, elderly people getting out of their homes, and so they have it basically living on one floor, but, you know, they may have family come over, they may need guest room, now we accommodate on the second floor. In addition, we'll have a office, you know, for a board for hall, or just a whole office situation on the third floor, this is not having closet. We're not intending that to be, that, that. I don't have any further, somebody have any questions about that?
Can you speak to the HPC's comments, though they didn't object to the application? They quote, encourage the applicant to consider restoring historic exterior detailing, using materials of the new floor, or other parts of the exterior, this is going to be designed by the DRO, the channel, the white chair here, pretty close to the, but did you explore, explore, I would say, a rejuvenation of the exterior in line with the kind of the DRO's?
Sure. We have definitely, we've definitely had discussions about it, and it's definitely been something that they, you know, that they may explore. I'm sure, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with the building, but we have so much work to do on the interior.
I live, I live at sixty-three, we're living outside two hundred square meters.
Okay.
I'll note that, there was my number one question, so.
Okay.
What I know about this property is, thank you for giving us the signage, that's wonderful. I believe there's vinyl siding on it now.
There is.
Extensive spider web of all kinds of wire.
Cable. Cable. We do believe that all that cabling, it's part and parcel to do with the fact that there are fifteen central units there. No, that is, that is a major priority for us as well.
And also, does include the holes in all the siding, the hole that those wires go?
Yes.
Can you imagine maintaining multiple kinds of siding?
Yes, at this point in time, we would like to, like I said, we want, it may be a little bit onerous to replace the entirety of the siding on the house at this point in time.
I guess I was, when I was curious, is given, just, just a wiring issue, for example, it's going to necessitate significant patching, or if such a level of effort for that, replacement could likely be occurred, as you were to replace or significantly repair, it brings the design into something more consistent with the types of materials, other aspects of how my DRO is, is, is.
And it might be better to have Jim come and just keep that question. So framing the issue correctly, and I appreciate your comments and questions you're writing, the exterior, and the issue earlier, is the vinyl siding is across the most attractive look that we're going to learn, and it's all that ugliness associated with the whole with cabling, and it's been certainly running, really cabling the holes, so they can decide. So, Jim, you want to speak to?
Yes, actually, we, we thought a lot about this, and there's two things in my mind. One is, actually, we have, we'll have professional electrician to evaluate, and we'll be a lot of the cable wire, and we'll just remove, and we'll look at, once the new wire needs established, what it will look like. In terms of the siding, I'm a big, now, if it's good material, hate to waste it, just replace with different new materials. So we'll try our best, we can maintain by repair and painting with new wire established, we'll do that. If push comes to shove, we have a still bad, we have to replace it, we'll definitely do that.
If I may, Chairman, just on a note, for purposes of anticipating a condition of approval, should there be an approval, I might need more definition of at least the subject of the review and approval of an individual or entity, to make that determination as to whether the. So we'll try our best, we can maintain by repair and painting with new wire established, we'll do that. If push comes to shove, we have a still bad, we have to replace it, we'll definitely.
If I may, Chairman, just on a note, for purposes of anticipating a condition of approval, should there be an approval, I might need more definition of at least the subject of the review and approval of an individual or entity. Uh, to make that determination as to whether the exterior will be sufficiently improved.
I mean, Tom, can you speak to, I mean, this is a, Jennifer's not here, so I don't mean to offend her. This is a busy area of ambiguity when it comes to dictating the degree of specificity that we help correctly out.
Right, we need some guidance for the purposes of the resolution. So what, um, what we have, what I believe is exists today is a vinyl siding called a mint green color. Uh, it's actually, I don't know, it's not, but, so, you know, when you get into historic specifications, sometimes color is part of that. Um, and then, you know, obviously, H P C seem to have an issue with the material itself, and so there's a question of that, okay, what are the alternatives? I would suggest that the building immediately to the west on the forest seems to have done pretty much out.
There's various.
Right, so, so maybe there's a middle ground, um, and maybe there's a way of exploring that to the satisfaction of the H P C. That, that's a pretty loose, uh, stipulation, and it leaves a lot of room, so.
Who would be our, uh, regulatory individual, I'm assuming it's not the H P C that's gonna weigh in, so.
Right.
Basically, a planner or engineer.
Sounds like an engineer. You know, on one hand, I understand that if it's functional siding, and, but, uh, can, can you read the comment again, because I don't think I've had the H P C's.
And for example, before you read it, like, there are, there are three, maybe four different kinds of railings, one on the stairs, one on the porch, one on the front porch. Which rendered itself to kind of repair that it saw when it was, when it was a home under multiple people living. That is still rendered on the outside, even though perhaps each in its own material may be a good standing. Sorry.
I'll reread the, the reference real quick, but just to, at least the point, at least that I wanna try for, is that H P C absolute is, is consistency, is what we're looking for. So we have an opportunity through the construction of these dormers, perhaps with some embellishment of selective siding, or railings at that point, um, to help bring a more consistent visual, uh, look to this, uh, to the structure. But I'll, I'll reread that real quick, um, and you're saying the H P C's comments from May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we would encourage the applicant to consider restoring historic exterior detailing and other materials on the dormers, other parts of exterior consistent with the design.
Thank you for that, and what we're, what we are willing to stipulate, uh, to right now is to unify and to uniform the ground and trim the structure. So appreciate the recognition or the ownership of the ground and the symbols and the, we'll take care of that. We will consider replacing the siding if it's absolutely necessary, it doesn't become a, the cost factor, there's a concern on how you're gonna do, uh, the interior, it's not just not gonna be used. Uh, the, 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 as a, as a multi-use structure, so.
Cables and wires removed to the extent that possible, uh, the not necessary repair of all this exterior?
Yeah. I would say, maybe before you do anything, the exterior, they'll check in with the city first, but that goes back to the question, how would that, that maybe just, you know, that the board's responsibility, the Department of Community Services, how you wanna.
Yeah, well, I mean, even, even for example, where the prior tack plastic lats are made under, under the stairs, whereas the trunks wood. So I think to Mr. Spur's point, consistency is, is important.
I agree.
Uh, I think if we can see that in the resolution, I think the resolution would help the city as we adhere to the resolution for building, uh, check the box.
D C S will be making a determination of the President's prime.
Yes, well, in the sentence for.
Okay, I don't, that would be both for consistency and following the signage lines and everything else.
Well, the zoning, our zoning office.
Department of Community Services.
Resolution and stipulations.
And, and.
Is there any questions from the applicant?
No, I don't think so, I think I know, I, I understand that the spirit is not gonna happen. And, and I guess it's worth noting, shouldn't you be, this is a good observation, good comment, the exterior is gonna be the last thing that, that we're gonna, we're gonna be focusing on the interior. So as that's going on, we certainly will have conversations with the city regarding the exterior, so we'll do your comments and stuff. Well, this is actually pretty well, it looks nice, so it doesn't make sense to spend all the money that are always on there, and it'll look different, or exciting from the comfort.
Just real quick, interior wise, um, construction official, who knows, this does happen where people come from the planning work, and they have ideas about what they want to build, but when they put it to practice with the U C C code. There are a lot of expenses, especially when you're retrofitting, fire systems, so just do, please be aware that commercial and residential require different stipulations to practice to impact.
Absolutely, I've spent the last five years, um, in, in commercial.
Well, to that point regarding code compliance, I mean, to the extent that you've, you know, designed to review this, are you fairly certain that it is compliant as designed? I guess we could do a question of, uh, you know, does it have proper egress?
It will be compliant, and actually, um, it was under rehab subcode, uh, the way that change of use works is it, um, it, it addresses a level of hazard for each type of use. And there's, uh, I, I believe it's probably around nine different items of hazard, um, very eager as fire separation, uh, things like that. Um, in every case, this change of use, uh, is a move to a either equal or to a lesser hazard.
And to that point, so in, in no case would there be a required exterior fire escape from two level walkways stairwell, that would impact the historic integrity of the whole.
Now, because, because each of the units has, has their own egress on the ground floor, they do not, nobody, nobody's using a main stairwell, and then also having to like to come off of that. Nobody's on the third floor, because they also have their own, their own, uh, dimensions of the, of the stairs.
And with the A D A, I would say, you're involved in that with you?
As, as an existing building, A D A is gonna be pretty difficult on this building. Um, the, there's a significant level change between the front porch and any of the, the nearby grades that are grounded. Um, naturally, we're gonna have to fill out a form where, you know, we, we address that the total cost of construction, and make sure that we're spending money towards, um, to make it, uh, making the structure more accessible, we will do that. Um, but in order to, to actually provide a fully accessible building, this would be very, very difficult.
Mr. Corrigan, the panel? Which of your witnesses would like to address the, uh, departmental questions? Yeah, I can open this all right.
Oh, yeah, so around the E B?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can address that.
Um, the recommendations were, you know, to provide solar panels, if you don't feel like this is appropriate for the building or for the area. You know, I'm not sure how the board feels about that particular recommendation.
Um, is your reason is why it would be appropriate? What do you feel is relevant?
I don't think it would be visually appropriate for, uh, that's for a living, this picture. Uh, it might be different if we were a commercial building that exists in downtown with like a flat roof, where we just wouldn't see all those panels. Uh, the, from, some mine dollars, the only area that we can be able to completely put panels would be on the, on the southern face and on the western face, uh, of that type of roof facing a direction.
I just, I'm curious, are you familiar with these other, uh, roof shingle solar panel products, that the light roof shingles?
I am, and I do not, I, I'm not saying they're there, but, I just, I feel that that, that might be a little bit, uh, I think that might be an early adopter issue at this point. I would.
In charge of station?
So, as far as the electrical vehicle charging, this is a requirement for new developments with five or more units, if you don't have that number of units. And so, um, you don't know that far for a per base foundation, and Mike will be able to speak to this, it tends to be pretty difficult, actually, to get charging stations for the parking spots that he had.
Uh, permeable, permeable, uh, materials to, or, and, that are discussed here, possibly using permeable, uh, pavement?
Um, to, to decrease the amount of the purpose covered?
Correct.
I would like to defer to Mike, and if I can, I can add one?
The, uh, the plan things, I believe, we're in agreement with, will, will provide, acknowledge that you have the comments, you'd be, uh, commission on that, and objection.
Is that the forest?
Well, definitely the forest, you guys already showed it to me.
I think it's the plantings.
Yes, we did know it was the plantings.
Oh, okay.
The, so.
I would limit to the, our questions, uh, comments, but we can touch on just your general views, the lighting plan for the site.
Um, actually, my.
And then I thought Tom was gonna take the bait, when he did do it, uh, there's no fire department comments on that application, so. Would you care to comment on, on that, or how you hope to address?
Sure, yeah, you know, there's an observation, so there are no fire, uh, department comments, so we'll find out, and we'll, uh, of course, build it compliant with all the fire code, and your patients will be there, and quarters. So the, the code, and we will, uh, create any reasonable issues that the, uh, fire department may want to see above beyond what's required.
So, the general condition, all building code and fire code applicable provisions will be complied with, and all reasonable, uh, comments and requirements from the fire official.
Yes.
Uh, the fire officials, so.
Yes.
And, and you have the authority to make that prospective condition, or stipulation issues, I guess, Jim, do you agree to that?
Absolutely. Is there anything, Tom, I mean, absent the fire department's, uh, comments, there is up for debate or discussion, spring moment, or, or, interior?
I mean, a lot of those are code compliant issues that would be dealt with in the building form, but I just wanted to make sure that anything they might require wouldn't impact the outside, because that's the purpose of the D R O C. So, I did have a few other just, uh, general, general questions. One, uh, you alluded to the, the usage of the basement, I think a few times we've asked for placement plan, I don't think that's all of the application, but with the city's records, if this moves forward, I think it will be a basement plan to show equipment access.
Absolutely.
So that would be a good reference. Um, and.
And then all you. Okay, this is subsequent, this is approval, I'm sorry.
Right, uh, and, and then finally, I'm surprised, um, the H P C didn't address specifically, but the, the dormer, I guess, configuration, I would pose a, that's understood that it's, the intent is to expand the habitable area of the number four. Um, you know, sort of shed configuration, and you explain how that is consistent with, I guess, the style of building or even the neighborhood. Um, I mean, that, that seems to be a focal point, and they directed us to look at the historic design guidelines, that's sort of a component, again, maintaining the historic integrity of the building, so.
I would say, so, um, do you, do you the width of, of the dormer, because of that, there's a, there's a pattern there, do you do the width of that dormer? Have you maintained in a, just like say, the original, um, uh, gable configuration? Um, I would be, I would be very nervous, it would actually compete with the large main gable, which I feel is actually the focal point of the front. Um, now, it could easily be a hip dormer, in which case, we still maintain our plate heights as it returns back to the house, uh, committed within that shed view.
Not being a historic architect, uh, I don't prefer the board circuit, but I've seen less of the shed roof, and more of the hip roof configurations and gables. So I, I think the, you know, sort of making, making it come to a point in either configuration, is, uh, you know, be more consistent with the historic integrity of the building. That's just my, you know, laying the planners' opinion, but certainly defer the board on that, or, or the H P C.
So, I'm sorry, we, we see it, but, uh, in the race.
So, maybe the condition would be shed roof or hip, subject to the H P C.
If you accomplish the goal of adding powerable square footage with a hip versus a shed roof?
Yes, actually, it would be, it would, it would have, it would have no area, only, uh, notable area.
Your point about the gable is you'd end up with a large gable, and it would compete with the intention of the main gable, and therefore, this is a better design alternative, and it's historically consistent?
That's how I feel, I feel it is less consistent, yeah, it, it changes the, 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 so. Um, I, who would be happy with, you know, I'm not sure I'm looking back at it for that to be, but I'd be happy to work with the H P C.
I'd, I would, I don't, I would just be somebody in the H P C that would be the ultimate arbiter of, whether shed or hip, or, or, you know, and any details. So who might the alternative arbiter be?
Or we're just decide now, if, you know, hip or shed. I mean, those seem to be the alternatives, unless we just say gable, and would that, is the, what's the span, what's the, what, not to, while this?
It's going to be approximately, it's gonna be approximately sixteen feet. It would be almost sixteen, so, in order to turn that into a gable, you have significant, you know, a gable.
Mr. Gable, please keep it close.
Yeah, in order to turn this into a gable at a reasonable plate height, it would actually interrupt the flooring.
Yeah, I, I.
Whereas, if it were, you know, the alternative being, if it were hip, it would at least come off of here. To me, this way, you know, we were able to maintain the existing replants.
I mean, at some point, these things. Yeah, I'm, I'm, they proposed that, that's.
And I'm sorry, so we're going with.
The current, the current plan.
Which is shed.
Shed.
Which is shed, that's what I thought.
Unless someone else has, I'm not, I'm not playing with this. I got my architecture, we have a crack at that.
All right.
Thank you, Jim, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Anybody?
Welcome to the board.
For the board's. Just for my, I'm, I'm, look at the zoning table, and the plan review, those increase in lockup, and what's that attributed to?
Uh, I'd like to.
Is that, is that your question? Okay, I just wanna make sure it wasn't the building, it wasn't.
No, not at all.
And just real quick, because you are increasing volume of building, uh, there would potentially be a core of hassle fee to, to, or?
I, I will verify that, because we're also decreasing volume.
Yeah, so, Jim, it will be either way, and I'll check if you turn, uh, if you turn this submission, you would even, though still completed under the F four. Uh, you might wait, you might wait to do your calculation, and go ahead, and it would, it would, uh, fewer, you know.
Okay, right.
We can work that out.
They look at the net from the, from the, what it was previously.
Yeah, the whole term.
Okay. We did have one question from, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, there's one area where you're expanding, uh, the dormer. But, it, it was an existing three and a half? Let me go back and, uh, I was, here it is. The, uh, is it current, how many stories is it current, and how many stories will it, will be once?
Current three eight.
Okay, so that half story increase, or what might have looked to me as like a half story increase, wherever it was there, that, that, that didn't go beyond the three story threshold?
It's, it's already above the floor threshold.
The, the attic constitutes an attic story, because it's, it's above a certain floor area relative to the side.
To the floor below.
Right. So it.
But, if, was it a three story in that area, or?
Yes.
Of the dwelling, or, it never got beyond a three story anywhere, is the key?
Yeah, but it was always a three story, a three level building.
Right.
They're expanding the floor area of the third level with the dormer.
Right, so the third story is getting, uh, warmer, if you will.
Well, more warm. Ceiling height is increasing, I'm sorry.
Oh, so, so that was the third story in that area already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Well, we should, mainly, I wanted to make sure we weren't going beyond three stories, which basically would be a, a different variance. I understand you technically need a variance for the existing three story, but this is changed, they do, but you're not going beyond three stories.
No.
And, and the height was never reported?
The height was never reported, sorry, sorry.
Just technically, this is a question for Tom, this, uh, sorry, I'll spring right back. Did I understand that the max height in feet is thirty-five, uh, in the zone, but this was a pre-existing thirty-nine foot wall building, wall?
Uh, I mean, based on, I do go out of metrics, so based on, but, um, right, so it's pre, it's, it's an historic building, and it's, it is one that is, you know, it's, but I believe.
Yeah, we, 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 we.
And the dormers are not taller than the peak, they're actually slightly.
I don't want to note these six, because it's not, uh, it's pre-existing at the thirty-nine foot height, it's in the bottom.
That would be like.
The, the, uh, got, um, but if they still require a three story, a three stories, even though they're existing three stories, well, technically, they also need, uh, still need a variance for the thirty-nine feet, another pre-existing. What would be the difference in, in, in each?
I hear, I'm just trying to process the question, so. If the dormer wasn't higher than thirty five, would that kind of?
Well, the dormer, to avoid a D variance, would be done more than thirty, forty five, I think, ten percent. So that's the magic number. And a question, I guess, even if a small portion of the dormer would exceed that, for that, it would be for D six, I guess, that would be the question. So. The level exists, the number of stories exists, and the reason that the C variance from story perspective.
Well, the thing is, it's already thirty nine feet. I'm not saying it's going, it's not going any higher than thirty nine feet, I said. As you said, that one area is catching up with thirty nine feet.
Still less.
It's definitely less, but it's more than the thirty five, so it's between thirty five and less than thirty.
It's less than thirty nine.
Okay.
So I don't, I, yeah, I, I concur, D six is not required. We're the right board, don't worry. Um, but what I, the the simple question I'm asking, uh, is, I have a question myself while I'm asking, but this, this, the question I'm asking is, if technically, uh, a variance is needed for three story versus two max, even though it's existing three story, then for consistency purposes, should we also be considering a variance of thirty nine feet as opposed to thirty five feet, even though it's pre-existing thirty nine?
I understand, I think the thought was that because we're not exceeding the height, um, we'll pause on that for a second, because the third level, the floor area and usable habitable space is expanding, and technically, the third level is expanding, but not above the existing height, so I understand that.
I see what you're saying. It's an exacerbation of the third story, but it's not an exacerbation vertically of the thirty nine.
Of that, of that dimension.
Right. I apologize for having.
No, I'm, I'm.
No, we didn't tilt too snug.
But, uh.
It's failing, baby.
That's primitive, yes. But I I think we're still below even the the maximum ten percent.
I can, then I can, I can concur both with the need for the three story variance, um, but not the need for the need variance for vertical height in feet, so.
I think that would be a distinction.
Yeah, I I think that's a valid distinction. Thanks. I'm not going to ask any more questions.
Yeah, there is.
Are we, uh, and so is anyone else, uh, on board, have a question on this witness?
I have a general question, either for Mr. Daniel or for you. Did you think through, or I don't know if you're agreeing with him, but did you think through having more than three apartments, and what led you to saying three was the right number?
Well, no, I think if you go more, it triggers some other regulatory issue with the, even the state, and also, as I said, you know, we already have one bedroom, that three bedroom, you do more, you get into from a design standpoint, it will be difficult because now it's a symmetrical building, as Tim mentioned. You know, it will be very hard, also the access staircase, et cetera, then you probably have to completely tear down the building, uh, this whole different level.
For units, then, if you kind of measure that, we're, you can see it sets to a threshold number, uh, as far as requiring the level, and if we were to do that, I also would be able to get, I wouldn't be able to get anybody out of the room, it wasn't profitable way, and like this necessity, you know, not so attractive exterior.
Okay, I understand.
More variance, parking, et cetera, more variance.
For the sake of argument, if anyone on the phone has a question for this witness.
I'm sitting very well tonight.
Great. Same guy, uh, we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. All right. Mike Roth, he's the Secretary of Engineer at our plant, for Roth Engineering. And Mike said, he's doing a show tonight, he's in, in a, in a, in a sense, it's got the bulk of the volunteers and the first comments. For, for the C variance, for the C variance that we are seeking, and answering some of the ancillary questions that will also ask.
Sir, please take your time.
Sure. Mike Roth, of all, I'm here, my last name is Roth, T H.
Thank you.
All right, can we please provide the board with your professional qualifications, please?
Sure, that's my role, I'm the owner of Roth, uh, Engineering. I've designed and engineered a couple of projects, just one will be discussed in that, I'm originally in Washington, good science and civil engineering, for L N G A T. Licensed P E in P P in the state of New Jersey, and my license is in good standing. I've been before, over forty different land use boards, however, this is my first time, for this board, I look forward to, uh, this project.
You said you, I heard you say P P, you also said P P is a professional planning license.
Correct, yeah, and they're both licensed, so they're good, engineering.
And, and, by the way, you've been accepted by multiple land use boards in each capacity as an expert, correct?
That is correct.
Sorry to steal a little.
No. So, is anyone having any questions for this person's small pages? All right, Mr. Roth, we accept you, sir.
All right. I remember you, there was a lot of questions to go.
So I'm going to start by discussing the exhibit that's on the board here, also handouts, uh, for the benefit of of the members, so thank you. We just hold on. So this is not part of the, uh, submission package, so I'll mark that as A one.
A one is, and we just call it, uh, two page, you can tell us what it is.
Sure, so it's entitled, existing conditions aerolab, dated June seventeen, two thousand twenty four. I'll refer to it as A one. What you see here is an aerolab in the background. The aerolab was, uh, taken from September fourteen, two thousand twenty three. The subject property is outlined in red. The subject property is lot nine, lot nine, you have four, located at thirty Hoodland Avenue. Property has an area of approximately zero point one of acres, and is located in the city's O R C office residential characters of the district. The property is considered a corner lot with parking on Hoodland Avenue, that is to the east, and Forest Avenue to the south. The property contains a three story building, which is currently vacant and normally used as a realtor's office and ringhouse, which is a non-conforming use. The existing building is set back nine point seven feet from the Hoodland Avenue property line and sixteen point two feet from the Forest Avenue property line, which are both pre-existing non-conforming conditions, as the minimum setback is twenty five feet. The building setback to the side property lines are seventeen point five feet to the western property line and nineteen point eight feet to the north property line, which comply with the minimum ten foot requirement. The building is pre-existing non-conforming for being three stories. We've heard testimony of that by the architect, as well as for the height of the thirty nine feet, where max of thirty five is permitted. And the existing building coverage is twenty eight point three percent, which complies with the maximum thirty percent requirement. And the existing floor area ratio is sixty four point eight percent, which again, complies with the maximum seventy five percent requirement. Uh, the property contains a one-way driveway that wraps around the building. Uh, there is a driveway opening on Hoodland Avenue, uh, to the east and the Forest Avenue to the south. Parking for the former use occurs in north and west of the building, uh, however, there was no striding there. Uh, and lastly, the subject property has a, has a, uh, uh, existing purbiest coverage of sixty eight percent, which complies with the maximum seventy five percent requirement. I'm now going to flip to the second page in the handout. I'll mark this as A two. This is entitled site plan rendering, dated June twenty first, two thousand twenty four. And it's the same aerolab in the background. The subject property is outlined in red. Those site improvements are rendered in color. Uh, as discussed previously, the project is supposed to convert the existing building to a mixed use, a mixed use building containing office and a women's apartment on the first floor, and two multi-level group member apartments that span the second and third floor. Uh, the proposed project is, uh, uh, conforming in terms of its use in the O R C zone district. The project is not proposing any changes to the building's footprint, therefore, there's no changes to the setbacks. The property lines is also building coverage. As mentioned by the architect, we are proposing the, the dormers that will expand the comparable floor area. The increased floor area results in a proposed floor area ratio of sixty seven point one percent, so it's a slight increase, however, it still complies with the seventy five percent requirement. Uh, next, the variance is being requested since the project is proposing to expand third floor, where a maximum of two stories are permitted, and the building is currently a three story building. Uh, next, regarding the site improvements, the project is proposing striped parking spaces in the north and west of the building, with a one-way access drive entering from Hoodland Avenue and next to the north of the forest. Uh, three parallel spaces are proposed along the north property line. A one ninety degree space is proposed to the northwest corner of the building, and then two parallel spaces are proposed along the western property. Uh, and this plan here shows the relocated trash enclosure area, which is now being proposed along the north side of the building. Uh, you see the six, uh, red panels, which, um, which indicate the four cartridge cans and two, uh, recycling bins. We previously had it proposed on the northwest corner, but it was enclosed proximity to the residential property line. Uh, we removed it, the weight's now nineteen feet from that residential property line, which complies with the seven foot, uh, minimum seven foot requirement. Uh, the project is seeking seven variances, um, dealing with parking and loading.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the seven foot requirement for the trash enclosures, now it's complying with north and west?
That's correct.
Okay, it, uh, it was zero and one before, so you got a, what'd you say, nineteen feet?
Nineteen feet to the, to the north property line, that's the, yes, nineteen feet to the north property line. Uh, it's even greater to the western property line.
Okay. Thanks, it was, it was relocated.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, so we're requesting seven variances, um, dealing with parking. I'll run through those briefly. Uh, proposed parking setback is one point five feet to the north property line and zero feet to the western property line, where a minimum of five feet is required. Parking provides for six parking spaces, where the requirement is eight. Uh, parking is proposed in both front yards, uh, where that is permitted, uh, no, parking is permitted in the front yard. Uh, parking is required in the street from the public roadway, uh, where that is proposed. The proposed ninety degree parking space is eighteen feet wide by eighteen feet deep, where a minimum width of nineteen is required, and the two parallel spaces, um, on the west property line are twenty feet deep, where a minimum, uh, plus, plus, uh, required. Uh, the dry aisle is eighteen and a half feet for the ninety degree parking space and nine and a half feet at the shortest distance for the parallel space, which also requires the variances. And the last variance related to parking and loading is the fact that we don't have a formal loading space for what is, uh, uh, required. Uh, next, the parking will be offered by the adjacent properties by the fencing. Uh, the existing wooden fence along the western property line will stay as is, and we're proposing a, a new fence to match that existing fence along the northern property line. Uh, site circulation is, um, improved from the existing conditions, as we're providing a full traffic pattern and striding that currently is not to, uh, to protect public safety. And turning temples to show that vehicles can safely enter the site and access the site, more included in the site plans on sheets three and four. Uh, project results in a proposed, um, purbiest coverage of seventy point five percent, which complies with the maximum seventy five percent requirement. It is only a varied by a two hundred and ten square foot increase in purbiest coverage, which is not, does not trigger the city's stormwater management requirements. Uh, the project results in no negative impacts to the neighborhood property, uh, the drainage patterns were unchanged. Next, regarding signage, the site contains freestanding sign near the intersection, uh, shows up on the rendering at the, at the northwest corner. Uh, the project, uh, this, the sign panel itself is no longer there. The post is there, however, and the project proposes to reuse that post to provide a sign for the new office tenant that will have an important sign area of six square feet. Uh, freestanding signs, uh, however, is not forming with a height of six point seven feet and a setback of seventeen feet, therefore, variance is being requested.
Sorry, so just a confirmation, the sign variances are due to the post's location and height, um, but the sign area is going to be, did you say the sign area itself is going to be compliant with the orders?
Correct, the, the freestanding sign area will be six feet, complies with the orders. The candy signs in, in board planners, um, uh, review memorandum, there's a, a few sentences in there about the candy sign, we're not proposing those anymore. Uh, so we, and that was to start with the architect. Uh, those were on the south facing building, uh, so those are not conforming, and they will no longer be proposed, or, or improving the signage and cleaning that up. Uh, next, regarding landscaping, the project proposes new plantings, uh, around the south and east side of the building to provide overall, um, enhancements to the project. The project also proposes, uh, new lighting to provide active light levels. Within the parking lot, the lights are proposed to be mounted on the building, and one of the building lights that is proposed is sixty feet high, which is a slight increase in the difficulty required, and therefore, variance is being requested. So as mentioned previously, we're requesting, uh, ten ski variances, almost all of them deal with the pre-existing non-conforming conditions. Uh, there's no D variance required, uh, for this project. So seven to ten variances are, are related to parking and loading. The other three variances are for the number of stories. The freestanding sign at the height of the building and the light. The ceiling, C two criteria, could be applied to our request for variance or leave. Uh, the property has been here for several years. The AL can see that it's existed non-conforming use by a group being asked to a conforming latest building, which is permitted in the O R C zone district. Yet it satisfies the C one criteria, reason of the existing building, it was the number of stories, is pre-existing non-conforming, and the site's existing in the arrogant driveways, uh, which result in a number of, uh, pre-existing non-conforming conditions that are required. And viewing the post was a pull, it impurges many purposes of the M L U, it satisfies the C two criteria, including purpose A, H and I. For the negative criteria, the variances result in a definite.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, but for the benefit of the, of the board, uh, can you just briefly explain, uh, two A, two H, and two I, of what the purposes are on our municipal address law, section two, which is not an exhaustive list, but.
Sure, uh, so purpose A is we're guiding the, uh, appropriate use of plan. We are improving the property, um, and proposing a, a mixed use project, uh, within the zone that's, um, um, permitted in the O R C zone. Purpose H is to encourage, uh, case you design transportation routes, non-throughflow traffic, uh, creating this new striped parking lot that improves the site circulation. And purpose I to promote the cycle visual, uh, through, through the, uh, proposed site plan, which, uh, proposes, uh, new landscape, and also the, the minor changes that are proposed to the building. Uh, so those are the purposes of the M L U that are being, uh, advanced purpose A, H and I.
And how each one is being the best, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure. Uh, so we're talking about the negative criteria, we're requesting variance resulting in a detriment to public good. Uh, variance for the number of stories provides a better building layout internally, as described by the architect, does not affect the setbacks. We're not, we're, to a point today, we're not going to quote property lines. The variance for the parking lot offer, uh, is being mitigated by the fencing, uh, existing, most fencing, uh, and problems of parking for the adjacent properties. The variance for the number of parking spaces, uh, just is, is a minor increase, and landlords are proposing to manage parking by, uh, uh, assigning one space per unit. So the three residential units and the one office use will have one designated space. Uh, the remaining spaces, remaining two spaces will be shared and allocated based on, um, um, previous to the landlord tenants.
Uh, the applicant stability to that as a position of approval should the board approve the application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we also confirmed with the city of Summit Parking Services Agency that daytime parking is offered in parking lot one, which is the lot of the forest in Hoodland. That actually shows up on this rendering. Uh, there, there's some sort of, our function, there are many, on the day of the area, where the most bases is a, it's a normal. but the most basic is a, it's a normal parking lot that honors daytime parking and is spread across the site. As far as overnight parking, we confirm that is offered in parking lot three, which is in forest and summit, a little bit of, for reasons after review here. Also, there's another parking lot, eleven, behind the CBS Capitol, that we confirm offers overnight parking. So the new form of use, we feel is much better for the site and is less than that existing rooming house, and just to touch upon it briefly before, rooming house require eighteen, eighteen spaces total, that's based upon the fifteen bed rooming house and a thousand square foot office. Our proposed use, which is only three apartment units and approximately seven hundred square feet of office, requires eight spaces, which will take and use and cut, you know, cut in half and maybe a little more in terms of what we're proposing. Next, the variances for parking in front yard, the screen, that does not impact the adjacent properties, as it's very common for parked cars to be in driveways, and is a pre-existing non-conform condition. Variances for the parking space dimension, driveway width, are a result of the pre-existing parking area, but we're doing the best we can to provide a safe layout, increasing some of the paving area to provide a safe site circulation for the driveway parking. The variance for the loading spaces, again, based on the type of use and loading operations to be controlled by the landlord. And next for the freestanding sign, again, it's a pre-existing sign post, I said, or simply proposing to reuse that sign and provide a new office business, a way to, to show their, show their business and for the public to locate that business, and removing a few non-conforming conditions, removing the canopy sign. And finally, the last variance regarding the building mounted light, just based upon that there's no room on the site to provide a full mounted light, so we're proposing all light in the building in order to get adequate light spray. It's a part of the parking space, we have to go up that additional foot from fifteen to sixteen, so a very minor change and deviation there for the building mounted light. And we remove one of the variances for the trash enclosure, so that's no longer being requested. And finally, the development proposal promotes many of the goals of the city's master plan by removing the non-conform use and reusing the existing building that respects the neighborhood and maintaining the character of the neighborhood and providing a project that offers a range of houses, with three new apartment units, bringing in from one bedroom to three bedrooms. Facing these reasons, the negative criteria is satisfied as by the use of the variances given grant without substantial damage to the public good, though not substantially impacting the intent of the purpose of the master plan and zoning orders.
Thank you, Matt. Do you also have a chance to review the calories or verities of professional counties that were unrelated to the variance with diversity?
I did, y'all touched upon the items that was part of testimony. Let's see, we'll start with the board engineer review. So I'm referring to the memorandum dated June third, two thousand twenty-four.
Wait, just before you proceed, just to be clear, the plan was revised at some point recently, right? As far as the submission goes, we're going to be looking at the trash in these units? Is that going to be handed out to the board or?
So it's shown on page eight six. And the full cycle is will be submitted.
We've confirmed.
Yeah.
So just for the board members' benefit, this represents something different than the subject that you had.
That's correct.
And then that engineering letter was written before the site.
Right, yeah, the only change, and it was just a minor change, we did cut down on the variances, is relocate trash enclosure. Everything else is pretty much.
Parking stalls.
And the parking stalls, correct, yeah.
Minor changes?
Yeah, I mean, nothing unfortunate, just, well, minor changes.
And they're both shown, but they're all shown on page eight two.
That's correct, yes.
So if they do present it to the board. What was the change in parking stall size?
We actually made a mark, so the previous trash enclosure area was in that northwest corner, we relocated that, so we had a little bit of more room up there. So they previously were under twenty-four feet, which is not conforming, minimum conforming at twenty-four feet deep, so it's a, it's a better parking layout, right?
So the northerly parallel spaces were able to stretch into greater.
That's correct.
And I'm sure that, but are there still some power, there are still some parallel spaces that are not twenty-four feet deep?
That's correct, yeah.
And the ninety degree parking space, that is not, nine feet wide.
Correct, yeah, it's the secret of the five, those other spaces.
Just the magnitude, the number is not, it's out.
Sorry.
Sorry, it's the, kind of, it was. We're interrupting, you just interrupt.
I'm good, I'm good.
That's a quick question, so what's the final about how the trash is supposed to go around the building? On the one plan, it says everybody comes in on Hoodland and backs up out of Hoodland, and then on the letter it says it's revised, so that they're supposed to go around the building, so which is the?
So the site circulation, you enter from Hoodland Avenue and exit on the driveway to the south, or?
But now you're a garbage truck or an ambulance or a fire truck.
They were still, let's take them one at a time, did the applicant provide a testimony on garbage, that would be out of control, what was the second one?
Well, just, I'm just looking to discover, first plan that says with the site circulation, basically everybody's going, coming down Hoodland, going into the building and then backing out again, but then in the letter it says that the site circulation is coming in on Hoodland and going out of Hoodland. And I'm just wondering, which one is the right one?
Which one do you want? I think the back one may just be referring to how the parking lot looks. That was, so it's going to show, or?
Well, it's pitch two of seven, you're in a whole box on the bottom of your document.
Yeah, you did that, just a short narrative on loading, garbage, snow, so that, and what product are you referring to in the board engineer's letter regarding circulation?
Um, circulation has the site revised to enter from Hoodland and exit on the east side, that's on page three or four of the April year, November eleven.
What number?
One, on page three.
One. Our letter?
The board. Oh, my letter, okay, I was looking at the board engineer's, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, it just seems to be, I went to Lincoln, my kids went to Lincoln, and I'm just thinking, everybody's backing on Hoodland is.
Yeah, so then, well, you know, the residents and cats, anyone parking there, they won't be backing up on Hoodland, they'll be backing up on the site, leaving the site on the driveway itself. Some of the garbage pickup, loading, some of those mislays, like thiz may happen, Hoodland happened in the driveway.
Okay. I was just looking, because it says fire trucks are going to do that, and I'm assuming the Amazon guys are going to do that, and garbage trucks are going to do that, and second trucks are going to do that.
Yes, some of that.
They're all driving in Hoodland and backing up, back out of Hoodland.
Some of that may occur, similar to if you were a single family home, you have a small driveway, someone's going to pull in back on the street and leave. And this is, again, this isn't for regular parking, this is for perhaps.
No, I was just wondering, because they're different on the letter and the thing, I just wanted to see which one it is.
Sure. So going back to the board engineer's review, just to touch upon items that require testimony. Number three, we'll provide a survey, we've determined there are no improvements since the data survey. Number four, testimony was provided by the architect regarding building changes. Number six, we provide testimony on fencing. Eight, we provide testimony for the variances. Number nine, testimony to provide for site circulation.
Did you skip seven?
I'm sorry?
Did you skip seven on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just touching on the ones that require testimony, so seven, we did provide testimony on fencing. We, number nine, we provide testimony on circulation. And eleven, we provide testimony on stormwater.
Seven was the letter.
Yes, seven was the letter, yeah.
The site, but you confirmed that it would require a variance for that, correct?
Sixteen versus fifteen to the one. Yeah, just for one, that's correct. And then for twelve, testimonies provided regarding those operations for trash, still ruled by the applicant. And lastly, thirteen, testimony provided for parking. All the other comments were going to comply with the testimony was required for those items.
And then the next?
Sure, so I'm referring to the Verbs Associates memorandum dated June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. So starting on the comment page one of page two, the architect provided testimony regarding building design, use of spaces. Number two, no additional testimonies required, agree regarding landscape, and we believe that the proposed design enhances the project, also providing use of the building, it does not impact the site's driveway, so we believe it's satisfactory. We're going to revise the landscape into address, there's few landscape comments, the requirement commission and the forest are providing species retreats, and we're going to make that up, apply one of that. Four, the proposed lighting is downward, result downward facing, there's no light spillage off the property. And then five, we talked about the variances for signage, we're removing the canopy signs, there's no need required there, however, we still have the relief for freestanding sign. Six, no additional testimonies provided, and number seven, eliminated that relief for the trash enclosure. The remaining items in the letter are related to the variances, so you can tell testimony was provided for that, the eleven variances, starting at ten, so we eliminated the last one on page six with the trash disposal area.
And then the administrative review matters?
Sure, so the consulting zone officer issued a memorandum dated June eleventh, was also a summary of the project and a few items that requested testimony have been provided regarding such as page two. I'll just, some of the other staff comments were already addressed, so I'll just kind of go through it quickly. The lease sheet, different comments. The sheriff's official, we heard testimony by the architect regarding code, compliance, the items, the whole department handled the comments. The city forester, we agree that we're going to replace or revise the species due to the one that they're requesting.
Or at least eliminate one that we proposed?
That's correct.
And will replace with suggested species, new made species?
That's correct. The requirement commission review, the architect's authority of it, there's a few comments regarding lighting, no testimony on all the lights are downward facing, there's no light spillage off the property. Regarding green infrastructure, the project is a major, it's not a major stormwater project, it's not even a minor, so we feel that it's not appropriate for the site to.
Which elements of green infrastructure here?
There was a recommendation to do permanent paper, it's really not a good application for small parking lots, and it's a best manager of traffic if you're a major stormwater project, which we're not, we're not even applying it, so we feel that it's not a good application. There's also a recommendation to minimize the size of the pavement, and at that point it would impact safety of the site. The parking lot has designed to maximize certain areas, provide a safe way for cars to enter and use it, we demonstrated on the current template, so I feel like it's not appropriate to reduce the size of the pavement. And then lastly, we talked about the native species will revise the landscape to incorporate that. And lastly, the HPC that was addressed by the architect, that covers the staff comments.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any of the board's questions, remarks?
Okay, okay. Why, why can't the light be moved down to be compliant with fifteen feet?
So remove the light down to fifteen, don't get adequate light levels at our corner, so I, oh, because in the light design, we're actually playing with it, and it, it's too low, it's too, a low spot of the corner, so that's why we had to come up to that sixteen feet for a safe light level.
And, and that's a building mounted light? And there's no solution to light that corner without mounting it above the fifteen feet?
Correct.
Nothing.
Correct, yeah.
When you say nothing, you mean?
There's no solution.
Other than like putting another light in the corner?
Yeah, so something other than, because what happens is the spillage, as you get above fifteen, it becomes problems for the neighbor, even in situations where there is daylight, because we have that before.
So the light plan shows the foot panels and what we've come up with. On page six is seven, on the site plans, we have a lay plan, and once you get off the properties in that location, there's zero foot handle being, so there's no light spillage off the property. It's a very shady area, therefore, we need to propose a whole mounted light, so the building mounted light is the best way to cross that area, it's very minor, um, change, call it fifteen, sixteen, if I may request that, that.
So what was it related to, the father's son, certain areas, can you put a border to the corner there to illuminate that, so you don't have to?
I mean, that would be in an area that's, people are going to be parking next to, I don't think they'll holler, the father might be put out.
How about this, so the alternative to the building mounted light fixture that we're in here, how do we realize, would be a light pole?
Correct.
But understanding the concerns about there being adjacent residential properties, maybe can we retain jurisdiction over lighting, so it becomes an issue to resolve?
When you say retain jurisdiction, it becomes?
Like for six months or a year after the, after the permits are issued or after the CO was issued?
There's complaints, how's it?
There's complaints, right, and it's shining right in the neighbor's backyard, and it's really obnoxious, that would get out of that.
And the white spillage study?
You come in for an amendment, or we do this as, as a field?
You give me a field.
Do as a field, we don't want to stop on.
I have to.
I see it for a change in, in, as a condition.
Why? The issue you run up to is you could have a lighting fixture that makes it technically compliant, doesn't mean it doesn't bother the neighbors on a key, I don't really have that obviously, so.
Well, and we, and we saw a spillage study which cost two thousand, fifteen to two thousand dollars, has happened on a site where the light was fifteen feet, but it actually unplanned and not caused spillage, but it application did. And the spillage was a two thousand dollar study, to figure out whether it was spilling, in fact, after the study was done, it actually was spilled. So we're just trying to avoid that. We just said something above, like granted, but then a month later, it is spilling, or you haven't planned on, and then what?
Perhaps review from engineer myself, I mean, he said would be ideal with a light mirror, and better be, it would be two thousand dollars, and determining if there's light spillage from our contract to the adjacent, so for the board engineer, post construction.
You know, if the board is okay with that, and you want to do that, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with doing that.
I think that's what Tom's getting at, the jurisdiction issue after construction versus what you're saying, change?
There's two different, when you say retaining, the board retaining jurisdiction post construction is one thing, if you're saying the board giving the board engineer the post approval authority to make that administrative determination, that's a different thing. So if we're talking about the latter with the applicant stipulation, or you can tap candidly, you might as well, they, they, that can certainly be done. By the way, the former could be done as well, but that would be. Yeah, allow, allow the artificial. Micro artificial. For us, you don't have to turn to experts, that's what happens. They can believe that. Yes, you're giving, you're giving compliance authority to an administrative official or professional consultant post construction, that's our difference, which is, is fine. Okay, so we, we've got all the conditions.
So is it a condition that it automatically happens, or is this? So is it a condition that it automatically happens or is this something that only if something happens?
I can only speak for myself, but when people come to the board, they don't break the rules. He said, well, you can, but you're gonna pay for a study to make sure that in your breaking of those rules, you didn't actually put anybody up a spill of light level. So I would like to see a study done and the conclusion of the project to quote it out personally, but I'm just.
Sorry, that's not I understood it. So that's not something that we would agree to. I don't think it's correctly. Warranted the testament in support of the C areas to increase by one foot as a section would be accepted by the board. Because it might have been sufficient proof in support of that, then that stands on its own. No place that you leave it. However, there is complaint. We are obviously, of course, willing to do a field change and well, the optimized solution to avoid that. But to put for the as a condition to extend, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars or it might be to confirm that the light is not studied. It's not something that we would.
I'm surprised.
Is this gonna be fifteen feet creating an unsafe condition?
Well, and I can make certain reasons. I don't want to sound harsh or dismissive of the concept. But the C various standards, we're requesting deviation from the rules. When you say breaking the rules, you know, that's not, it's deviation from the standard, right? So so for that, there's a proof to support that deviation. The board accepts those proofs and we're no longer breaking the rules. We've been a courtesy support of, hey, you know, not with standards. With standards, it makes sense to do it definitely in this situation if you're flawed. So if we get to that point, then for our purposes, it's supposed to all this stuff. There should be, you know, a follow up step imposed upon the applicant. Any applicant for any series. So they could, you know, there's a host of other follow up.
I think we understand that. On the other hand, that's assuming that you've actually made the case and we're saying that we're not sure that you've made the case. Because we're not sure what the impact you're raising a foot is. So we are looking for someone to measure that and make sure that the harm is not returned.
No, I understand that as well. I saw, I, no, I'm sorry. I saw, I'm sorry. Yeah, so no, I didn't want to appear dismissive. I thought really, you know, I wanted to make clear why we're saying what we're saying. So we are willing to work with the board. We totally appreciate and understand the light issue. It's a major issue wherever you develop. I live out of rural country and it's a major issue there because of resource shortage or anything else. We don't want to have light pollution. So we are willing to work with the board and whatever is pending reason. I'm asking for thoughts, opinions, suggestions other than a two thousand dollar light study to address this real issue.
So I wonder, I think it looks like B two is the light.
Correct.
Is it going to be anywhere light?
Correct.
Is there a way to move it more to the west? On a different facade so that it goes, it's closer to where it needs to throw light?
Yeah.
And then you can lower.
Drive that. Sure, we could look into that. And you know, maybe even result adding a light somewhere.
I could see that, that maybe you might have to add a light near where A is on the.
Right, to pick up for that.
West side, right.
Right, I think they're actually in western facade. It's less than they have to cut that property or it's not.
One thing, could you, could you talk about the topology that's on the northern side of the property? There's a wall along the property and a fence on top of that wall. Could you tell anyone about that? What kind of height?
Yes, the adjacent property to the north sits higher and actually one of the things that was modeled in this lighting plan. Is the cutoff from the fence. It's a solid privacy fence. So you wouldn't have. That's why the adjacent foot candle is zero. Because essentially, if the fence wasn't there, it would be spilling. But the fact that there's a fence there. Unless it cuts off the light level. But if it's, I mean, if it's an issue, we could review the lighting and.
Yes, no, we can absolutely look to move the lighting to a new location, put it in the D P and supplement with additional lighting. Obviously, we're investing in as well to address the lighting concerns.
Yeah, but when we talk about if a complaint is received, the neighbor is offended by the light, waits six months before they complain. And you've got your C O, the rest of it comes closed down and then we have a lighting issue. Well, who's on the hook to pay for the study then? Figure out how to solve that problem. And that's why between water and hurricane lighting, we try to make sure that's addressed here. So I don't want to be.
No, I think so post construction. They'll subject to the review of school of boards and.
Sure.
Correct.
Yeah, we're gonna revise the plan to show all light.
Treat construction.
At fifteen feet or less.
Well, that's where I was going. It's also been eliminated from that.
Go team.
And it might be, it might be adding another light.
That is correct.
More major heights.
Right, right.
Good solution.
Good question. Wait, I thought I had opening there.
Company. Is there a generator anticipated in the site? I prefer that to be after. A generator anticipated in the site?
A generator, you have a generator.
Well, I think we're looking to that. There's no space. We don't have really another space for it. We don't have an added space for it. There is. I have not done the research. I know that I have seen interior internal generators that they're gonna require. They're gonna require flues. They're gonna require it's a lot of noise within the buildings. So the answer would be, no, we have not. We looked into it and we decided against it.
And then for the three residential units plus the office space, are the four anticipated trash receptacles and the two anticipated recycling receptacles added for those, that configuration?
That's correct. Yeah, one each year would get traction. Site would be shared. Who would be responsible for bringing the recycling?
Ten. Because every week for that location, Thursday night or Friday morning or six AM, you bring the recycling.
And then we roll the dice between.
Just a little lucky.
That's, you know, I have other rental property. Normally you can ask one designated tenant, give them a little incentive or they take turns. So that's not a long issue.
Not stipulated lease agreement or something?
Definitely can add in the list, but normally it's verbal. There is always someone actually volunteer to do that. Surprised. Like to take care of things.
You did speak to somebody for stormwater management that the repatriation site is triggering through a threshold. But given that, I don't know if there's any real existing storm, existence of energy controls. Can you speak to what is in place today and its adequacy for the site?
Sure. So the existing site drains, the northwest corner is a high point in the site. And there's runoff that drains towards Lulun Avenue to the east and then also to the south. The overlay flow beyond the pavement flows towards the street. Everything pretty much flows toward the street. Nothing impacts the properties to the north or to the west. And we're keeping that same drainage pattern. As a really minor increase in purpose coverage to somewhat offset that, providing the new plantings and landscaping. And again, just reach that threshold, city threshold for buying sort of stormwater management practice.
But the existing, the existing stormwater management is sufficient for the property, its configuration today, the purpose surfaces.
Correct. Yeah, everything, everything close off the property in safe manner to, to the, to the infrastructure.
Now, we brought out about the signage since China has slowed down variances here. Would the, and just to be clear again, can the signage just go?
Correct.
And then the signage on the corner of Lulun and Forests. The variance anticipates, the variance for, it's one variance, but variance for heights and location. The location, given the situation of the structure on lock is necessary. Would the applicant stipulate to reducing the signage height at least to go to good for this?
Well, it's end of the day, the sign opposed, we can, we can, I think we can hold back to within the compliance, right? Is that? The request was the height. I can, if I'm questioning, I think the location is best because any firm who do that. You actually don't get the benefit and impact of the view of that sign as you approach the building.
And you've stipulated to the sizing of letters be within our ordinance, correct? They can't get any bigger. That's correct. You can lower the height.
The applicant has stipulated that will lower the height to forming. I believe.
Or feet?
All right, not really.
You have to leave his own parents at least.
No, no, don't want to.
Anyone else have comments or questions?
I have one more question on that. Could you talk about if there's any assigned parking or how that kind of leaves at all?
So, you know, it's a six parking for units. So we have one designated assigned for each unit. And then the two other, I would call them floaters. And now depending on, you know, sometime will be the tenant only have one car. There's no issue. If they do have two cars, there will be a great, you know, depending on the size of the car where they can park. So the two floaters will be agreed upon between me and the tenants. So there, but minimum one assigned spot for each unit.
Is there any mystery parking on either corner under guard or there isn't, right?
For that, I have a lot because the testory is where we see the K R and I see the S.
How big are the units going to suppose to be?
How big?
How big are the units gonna be?
You mean the size or the number of bedrooms? The one bedroom on the fourth floor and the two side by side town, two flat style will be three bedrooms each.
And six spaces though?
Total six.
And the snow removal, it's kind of narrow. Is it kind of loud getting through that driveway or how are you?
Oh, I think it's gonna be currently that happens because you shovel. You shovel, you know, in snow removal, they use shovels.
It's probably a professional.
You know, you have those kind of Jeep thing in France, you know, that may be too tight, especially when you have cars parked on the side. Scratch that part.
Right, that's what I was asking. That's what I was asking.
It's my house and they just use, like in professional, they will be, I know it's hard work, but something. There's not enough space.
And you'll be mainly responsible for that?
Yes, all hire, the landscaper will cover both snow removal and lawn care.
And there are special rooms for snow going around the school, for traveling around the school at what time they have to do? I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
I'm operating.
You drive the sidewalks?
Yeah, the sidewalks.
So it would be in a certain, certain time of the snowfall.
I know, but I was just wondering if there's anything special right around the school.
No, no. How old is school spouse?
Right?
Yeah, they take it close, yeah.
And so three bedroom, you're saying we'll have one car?
Minimum one car. Wait, total, there are total six spaces. So the three bedroom, two three bedroom apartment will have one car each for sure. But I want them to be a little flexible because three bedroom, they may only have one car. There's no need to give them two parking spots. In that case, I give one extra to someone else.
And have you envisioned what office, what the use for the office would be?
Administrative style, like a, you know, accountant or attorney, that kind of things. No. No state architect engineer. And you stipulate as a condition of proof that the office would be committed to professional or administrative and no retail, correct? Correct. No retail, no medical.
And that, and they are afforded one spot as well? And they are afforded one parking spot as well?
Minimum one parking. Again, I think I want to make sure they definitely got one, then based on the need, I think can allocate the entry to the spot. I think on record, definitely no business. I think I don't want to limit too much about others. I don't want to have definitely no retail business for sure. As a condition. Did the, I'm sorry, as a result, I thought it was, I thought they were two, all two bedroom units and just discussing that with my colleague. The, on the third floor at least, the fourth floor, third bedroom is listed as an office and this room deposit. So are these two bedrooms or?
No, no, it's the third bedroom and then there's an office.
There's one on the main level or two above?
The third floor contains two bedrooms. The first of the three is on the second floor. Is that right?
Correct.
Stack, stack.
Stack, no, yes.
You make your windows go stack.
Side by side, no, no.
Right, side by side.
The use of the office was an interesting question. You can't definitionally consider it. It potentially increased the occupancy. I wouldn't want to assume that.
Right, right. There's no. Any more questions about that part? Anybody have a question? Anybody have any more parking differences?
I don't really need to have any other options. I don't, I don't know if there's anything else that can, if there are any spots on here. In fact, they created more parking spots by having more surface on the lots in the area.
Right. Which, to be fair to them, sort of similarly matches the neighboring property. Why showing us everything that's very spotty?
We just have a question about the windows. It looks like there's, they're maybe not all the same in style. Is that accurate?
The current, well, we're gonna replace all the windows.
Oh, and there'll be a, a manner that respects the historical style of the house, not just.
If there's anything left in my board here, the, I'll try the parking spaces. What are the RSIS required number of parking spaces for a three bedroom residential apartment? I can throw it out.
Two point one for a three bedroom.
For a three bedroom.
Two parking spaces.
So doesn't, oh, because you have the extras, you're counting the extras towards the. Do you need an RSIS to know this exception?
Oh, in addition to the, to the varies for, from the ordinance.
You need eight total spaces and you have six. So. Yeah. Eight is in the ordinance and the RSIS? They're consistent.
Two, two, one, one.
One point eight, that's right. Two, two, one point eight, whatever the office requires.
The office, well, how does the office require? It's a professional office.
The office requires two point four. It's seven. Seven twenty two.
You round down or you?
So it comes to, when you, you do it to the ten calculation, it comes to eight point four, round, you round out the eight.
Just information for the board.
Another good question. Is this stump, is the tree, that the tree stump or is it a stone wall? It's an older picture. Does that still exist on the property?
Stump in the tree, stone wall, is it still on the property?
Where is that located?
Is that the entrance of?
On the right?
It's on the, is that?
What do you mean, the adjacent property?
It looks like it's on the property, but there's a tree and a stone wall that sits to the left of the property, but it's still there.
If a portal goes in a new wall along that north property line, that's going to ultimately tie into that wall that you're seeing as, as kind of at the property line. Well, any more questions in the board and, and public? What, do you like the summaries?
I'll await the applicant's summation and then I'll, when we're.
I'm happy to summarize.
I'll go through it.
Actually, we, we.
Liberate.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, two of my summaries are. So I, I'll give you, I'll give you my chance, I think. We presented ample purposes for, our demonstrator will be heading to the property. We addressed any comments in the summary reports, or the current reports. We've presented professional testimony supported there to the direction we are seeking. The improvements needed to the property resulted in renovation or outdoor form use. I consider, I think it proves the current, the current status of the property. We have, through the public, we're the board, we're the various directorships we are seeking. We came here, we submitted eleven, we brought here ten, and we're here with seven?
Oh, not nine.
We signed with.
What they were having?
We're reducing it, we're having, we're coming out on half. So we certainly with the, the application is a good use of the property and we're supporting approve the application and the question actually with, with the, 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 the issues.
Steve, before you, before you, I mean, these, like, there's anybody, I'd like to go into a session, actually, just to discuss. You do?
No.
All right, good.
No, 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 I mean, I'd like to do something that's very good. We thought you could speak sort of much, you know, I opened one bedroom, we worked with two cars, so it's a challenge. It became a lot, even though I certainly provided some level of support in the application. I think any further than that, I would make this kind of difficult. But I'd also personally like to see, like, this neighbor, the purpose is that capacity. But I think we tried our best to make sure that there was consistency in respect to the, the, the.
I also think, I mean, it's a nice use of the property. It seems like we probably didn't have fifteen cars for all those rooming costs. But potentially they, that was a need that we've reduced to prove this application certainly reduces. So, you know, it is a much less dense use and they're providing more parking than there was. So I guess we look at that as a net plus. Anyone else? I just note that for that particular lot and its location, it's intentionally transitional. And I would applaud that, it's incorporating both residential and office use. I show a favor to the more residential occupation for Woodland or the increasingly commercial use on Forest Avenue. Granted, I was just happy to see the one of those, and thank you for doing that, etc. So the, I think generally the aesthetics are trending in the right direction. I hope the applicants heard clearly from the board today, is while there may be ambiguity on the application and sign guidelines, we would look for you to consult with perhaps other professionals or just carefully study those references and show some sense of clarity to that. But things like university brass examining, how smokeable and how trash and recycling pickup would, would be addressed. It's something that hasn't been addressed on that side for decades' time. With the wiring, to the extent possibly we can on the exterior, is wonderful. But the elimination of outdoor form usage is one of the most compelling elements of the application today. Everything else suggests that you've gone as far as you can to accommodate the uniqueness of the property. Short of not getting down and trying to build something which probably was not financially feasible, that's why we built that. So thank you for all the effort, you and your professionals, on the table to keep this structure in place and soon rejuvenated and supported as well.
I should have a question for that. Does the change in use from the rooming situation to three apartment units, do any, is there any, or a lot of resets?
No, that triggers at five to the person. We think a little bit, if it's a new house, it's a residential development fee or a commercial, non-residential. In this case, they both, it's called an ARV F four, but in the hour, it might, it might, based on the volume of increase and decrease, I don't know. Is that right? The tap box, please.
Well, then at this time, I ask just one, tell us what we would be going on. What would be the conditions that we've served, Mr. Chairman?
The relief sought, site plan approval, along with less than eleven now, variances, bulk variance for three story versus two-story maximal, albeit a pre-existing position. Landscape upper green yard setback of one foot versus seven feet, side yard setback, zero feet versus five feet is the second variance. Parking in a front yard, one space is in the front yard versus permitted. This is the third variance. Fourth, parking screening, not along Woodland Avenue. Number five, parking space number. Six, provided versus eight spaces required. Number six, sign variance relief. Only left now is the, there we go, of course, I put the wrong line. There we go. Seventeen foot sign setback versus twenty-five foot setback required. The lighting height appears to be gone now. So the seventh variance is parking stall dimensions. There are still some parking spaces at, ninety degree parking spaces that have an eight foot width versus a nine foot minimum width required. And some parking spaces that, parallel parking spaces, that have a twenty foot depth, whereas a twenty-four foot depth is required. Number eight, drive aisle width. We have ninety degree parking widths, drive aisle widths of eighteen point five feet, which is deficient. And parallel parking, drive aisle widths, nine point five feet, which is deficient. And the ninth, I guess, and last, variance is no loading spaces provided, whereas one floor space for the office is required. If I got that right, those are the nine variances. That was the easy, had the site plan approval, that's the easy part, the conditions of approval. The wall conditions stipulate too, we have all of the board professional and staff reports, including the, the, board engineer included, not limited to board engineers, June the third report, and the board planners, June eleventh report. Stipulation that the office will be utilized for professional or administrative office purposes only and no retail or medical office use.
Sorry, can I just, no retail only? The medical sometimes can be also considered not as, can be like academic?
That's a different, from a parking perspective, that's a different law, so.
Is medical permitted in there?
That's a good question.
Since retail is probably required, if I understand correctly, no retail. Medical, because depending on the medical nature, that doesn't necessarily.
Medical retail or medical office?
Could be medical office, but no retail. I think the requirement is no retail.
These are the board distinctions. I think you just represented.
I heard.
You just represented. I'm going to review what's permitted in zones.
Yeah, I misspoke about the medical parking. I realized medical is not necessarily retail. Sometimes you don't necessarily have a lot of traffic for medical, can be.
I would agree, it is separate, right? Let's just.
Can be telemedicine these days, that you need to have, be, have to be.
Where are you at there?
Now, medical office parking is usually different standards, that's general thoughts.
I mean, the board could consider, it's just that's, it is the first time we're hearing that. Why don't we go through the rest of the conditions?
I was, I was going to close that, so. I'll take this step. The, let's see. Removal of all unnecessary cable wiring from the exterior, as well as, designing the exterior with the consistent visual look and any necessary repairs, all subject to the review and approval of our City Department of Community Services. Compliance with all building and fire, all applicable building and fire code provisions, as well as all reasonable provisions required by our fire chief. Use of the basement will be for, why don't I have that as a condition, equipment and access? We're going to show that on the. Yeah, you're going to show on the plans, that's where it goes. My college was, to be shown on the plans as a condition subsequent. The shed roof has been stipulated to for the expansion of the dormer. Any applicable formal housing, developers fees or similar fees will be paid depending on the determination made as to what's applicable by the city. The assignment of the tenant parking spaces, one minimum for the office, one for the one bedroom, one for each of the two, three bedrooms, present, right?
That's right.
Shall be assigned in the appropriate lease documentation by way of assignment, so that it's documented. See, I mentioned all the other applicable reports, including the native species. It's here too for the landscaping. The light B two will be of compliant height and will be relocated perhaps to the west on a different facade, which may or may not require an additional compliant height light on the facade, all of which shall be subject to the review and approval of our board engineer. I think that's why.
So from a prohibited use perspective, the zone allows offices and professional offices, and no part of the coke, from a use perspective, distinguishes between professional and medical. And they are distinguished from a parking standards perspective, so, which I'm getting to. So I believe medical use would have a, an increased parking requirement relative to the foyer. Getting to it. Um, that I don't know about. An ADA for?
If you're in the DRO, page two sixty, part minimum parking residential and non-residential zones, medical and dental offices, urgent care facilities at one hundred fifty square feet GFA. One space for.
So that'd be to the half of the.
That's seven twenty-two, you round it up to five, except.
We'll stipulate a month.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
So, all right, with that, with that said, unless.
Not to harp on the historic part, but I just, we want guidance in terms of what the board envisions, because after the fact, I can see in my crystal ball, just there being different expectations in terms of what we have to offer and versus what we're asking. So I think I've heard, you know, getting rid of the cables, we're going to clean up and paint the trim, et cetera. Is that kind of where we stand?
No, we're, we're, we're going to replace the trim and the spindles so it's all uniform and consistent.
Right, with those being replaced.
It'll all be replaced.
In a historically sensitive way.
Yes, this isn't, both of the character of the house and the neighborhood, and also consistent throughout the house.
And the siding is.
Siding is, so we're going to, we're going to remove. We're going to remove the, the exterior wiring from this, I presume, which never will be able to ever replace. Place, we'll remove all that, run a repair, unless we can, and we get to the one where it's not workable aesthetically, then we'll replace.
And may go without saying that we should say the dormer's siding will match whatever the rest of the building, etc.
That's an agree.
They'd agree.
Match the balance of the exterior of the structure.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, with all conditions as, as set forth and decided by, by our board council, do I have a motion to approve this application?
So.
Mr. Sparr?
Yes.
Mr. Delory?
Yes.
Ms. McGee? Yes. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Chairman Zucker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So thank you for a good conversation.
Appreciate it.